Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 10th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Councilman Kincaid, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I sure will. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great love of our Christian citizens, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay. Our clerk tonight is not feeling very well, so I will be calling the roll for us. Councilman Campbell? Campbell?
Here.
Councilman Copeland?
Here.
Councilman Fleming is excused. Councilman Kincaid?
Present.
Councilman Morris?
Here.
Councilman Robertson?
Here.
And Councilman Wheat?
Present.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Any questions, comments, amendments, or changes to our previous minutes meeting? Meeting minutes?
I make the motion. Will you approve the minutes?
Motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. First, here is old business. Is there any old business coming for the board, Council?
Not for me.
Okay. Then we'll move on to new business. The first item I have up here is Resolution 2018-31, which is a consideration by the Common Council of the City of Lebanon, Indiana regarding the designation of an economic revitalization area. And this resolution is on first reading tonight. We have Ben World from the Economic Development Corporation is here to talk about this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Ben World, Deputy Director for the Boone County Economic Development Corporation. As I had said in an email that I put out earlier, earlier this morning, hopefully you all received that. If you didn't, please let me know because we want to make sure that that information is accurate, that we have in our system. Economic revitalization areas are simply a tool, a mechanism, for us to be moving forward with other incentive options later down the line as we are trying to move at the speed of business out there. We recognize that because of Indiana State Statute, and Rob, you can correct me if I stray off for the statute side of things, but the economic revitalization area has to be established first before any incentive options, especially regarding any abatements that may be out there, are considered later. So this is an area that we've identified that is not yet in an ERA. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's a project specifically going to it, or that there's a tax abatement right behind it or anything. It just simply means that this is an opportunity for us to set up this area for potential future growth, and this mechanism allows us to do that. Any, anything to add to that, Rob? Did I get it?
Yep.
Okay.
I would also clarify, too. This is not a TIF district. This is just an ERA area. So it's, the area already exists. It's not a, there's actually already a building there. It's just not a, there's not a TIF district, so it's not creating any district like that.
And just to tag on to that, there's actually, it's actually a part of three different parcels that are out there. I believe two of the parcels are already in an ERA, so this would be just kind of encompassing the total body that's there.
All right. So any questions for Ben before we move forward? I have Rob read the audits, or resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rob, can you mind reading Resolution 2018-31, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as, this is Resolution 2018-31 regarding the designation of an economic revitalization area. And again, as we've heard before, this council has the right and opportunity to abate the payment in real property taxes for the real estate located within an area declared by the council to be an economic revitalization area, as well as abating personal property taxes. Set forth in Exhibit A is the area, the legal description, which we're talking about, and Exhibit B has the map, which are both going to be part of the economic revitalization area, in which property owners and lessees may make an application to the city for the abatement of real or personal property taxes. So this council would find by this resolution that the area is located within the corporate boundaries of the city, that the area is defined in Exhibits A and B as declared to be an economic revitalization area, and that a public hearing shall be held at a time and place of the regular meeting of this council. We will publish, or cause to be published, a notice and adoption of this resolution pursuant to Indiana Statute at least one time, 10 days prior to the date of a public hearing. Pursuant to Section 2.5b of the Act, a copy of this resolution shall be filed with the Boone County Assessor, and pursuant to the Act, the council shall file a copy of the notice with each taxing unit that has authority to levy property taxes in the geographic area where the area is located. And this information shall be filed with the officers of such taxing unit at least 10 days prior to the date of the public hearing, and the resolution shall be in full force effect immediately upon its adoption.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Now that we have had the resolution read, any further questions, comments? Any questions, comments, concerns from the public? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-31.
I'll make a motion that will approve Resolution 2018-31.
We have a, we have a motion to approve in a second. Further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All those who are here say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Resolution 2018-31 passed unanimously. Thank you, Council. I want to move this around a little bit. The next item I have up here is the Food and Beverage Fund request from the Boone County Historical Society for Lincoln's Lebanon Civil War Reenactment. Linda, if you want to come forward? I'll hand it over to John as the President of the Food and Beverage Commission.
Thank you.
I'll let Linda go ahead and make her presentation.
I thought you'd do it, so I didn't have to.
I will help you.
Okay. Linda Ridgeway, Boone County Historical Society Vice President at the moment and Chairman of the Lincoln's Lebanon Civil War Reenactment, which I put in front of your desks. You have a copy of the brochure for this year and also our program. This is our 11th year, and it's amazing. Started out with myself and one other person trying to get this going in the backyard of the Craigan House. I think most of you know that. And it has evolved to be a pretty spread-out event in the park. We pretty much rent the whole park because it just keeps growing and spreading out. We ended up, the first four years, I think, with the maximum of three soldiers, and then the word got out, you gotta go Lebanon, you gotta go Lebanon. So the soldiers themselves and the event people, who are not just soldiers, they portray different aspects of the Civil War. We have a hospital, we have a mortician, we have a surgeon, we have a chapel. Church services are on Sunday morning at 10 o'clock, so you can come visit if you like. A little bit of just civil life back in 1860, 1863, 64, in that era. Lincoln does come, and I think if you look on the front of the brochure, he's a pretty good-looking Lincoln. He portrays Lincoln really well. He is in, and well, as all of the participants that put this on for us, they are in character the whole time they're there. If you walk up and talk to them, they don't slip out. They portray somebody. The surgeon portrays a specific surgeon in that era. And they study it, and it's, what's amazing, in the first few years, if I'm out there and trying to make this go and see all these, you know, a few handful of men out there portraying a war, it was almost embarrassing and comical, but it evolves, so you can really truly see a battle. And when they, I wish we had a better PA system. When they go out on their battle, they are portraying a particular battle. So there's different things that are happening that maybe I can recognize and people out in the crowd don't. But we have narrowed the battles down to just two. One on Saturday at 2:00, one on Sunday at 2:00. If you don't like the big bang, you can leave town. So, but I'd rather you stay and come watch it, but, you know, if it offends people, we apologize. So far, I only had maybe two complaints in the 11 years that I've been working with The funding is difficult. We don't have warm, fuzzy little puppies and kittens or children, so it is very difficult to get funding for this type of thing. What I'd like to ask you, if you're interested, would be to support or sponsor our cannons. That would be $1,200 to sponsor the cannons. We never had someone sponsor them. So it's something that we kind of pick up the price for them. We don't charge. There's no way of charging, number one. It's just a wide-open park. We would not change the venue if we could because the soldiers really like Lebanon. One of the, well, actually, the doctor just told me two days ago, he said, Linda, yes, I'm going to be there. Love coming to Lebanon. You always have a crowd. So if you ask me how many people we have, I can't tell you. There's just no way of counting. One of the members of the council before have told me, there's a lot more here than you think, because it's a whole weekend. It starts Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. People come and go, but when you've got the vendors and the portraers themselves saying, you have a good crowd, that says a lot for Lebanon. I don't know what they would do if we didn't have this because they truly do enjoy it. I guess I'd like to ask if you have any questions, any issues that you've ever heard of that we haven't addressed, we would certainly like to do that.
Just a comment, because I live pretty close. It's pretty cool to see it. I see it every year, and it's really cool to see it, and it just puts you back in that era, like, you know, they didn't even have television, you know? They didn't have anything like we, now, I get mad because I can't find my remote sometimes, and, you know, they didn't have any of that stuff. So it's so cool to be visualized, you know, trying to live like that. So it's very cool. Thank you for doing that.
Sure. And again, it's our gift to the community to help you understand a little bit of your history. The other thing would be, if you can, go for a walk through the park in the evening. That is cool. When the fires are on, it's quiet, you can hear them singing, just chattering back and forth, and that is a cool time. And the really interesting part is when you watch the children, who are just fascinated, especially if they want to talk to Lincoln, he gets down on their level and talks to them, and they can see the things that are going on.
I will say that Linda, who is a representative of the Boone County Historic Society, met with the Boone, with the Lebanon City Food and Beverage Committee, and she is representing the Lincoln's Lebanon Civil War Reenactment. It was a very good presentation that she made to our committee. It's amazing that we're on the 11th year right now. The one thing that Linda talked about was the first year, they had three soldiers that appeared. And did we meet at the Craigan House your first year, is that correct?
Yes. The first year was in the backyard of the Craigan House, kind of open potluck for the community, and one soldier was there that year. The next year, they gave me the job, and I said, okay, but if you want me to do it, it's going to get bigger and we're going to have soldiers. But that took four years.
Yeah. 2017, last year, they had 225 soldiers at the park, and they were scattered throughout the park. And again, there's no way that you can try to estimate or guess the population, or how many people go to attend this, because they walk in from different areas of the park. The park is open to anyone and everyone to see this and to attend this. It is a very unique situation for people, for history buffs to come see something like this. I know that Councilman Fleming, being in the military right now, he enjoys the artillery and the cannons and things like that, because that's what he is doing right now with military. It has grown a great deal, and I know the public enjoys it. I don't know if the Parks Department, do we enjoy it?
Sure, I do.
Sure, we do. But it has grown.
Well, to be fair, we have leftover straw every year, we have firewood every year, so we leave that for the Halloween, that following month, too, so.
Yeah. So with that, Dick, did you have anything else since you met with the committee?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I support it. I think it's, I've been out there the last couple of years for a little bit just to watch it. I enjoy it. I think it's fun to watch and see all the different stuff going on, and I think it's something the kids ought to see, so.
I would encourage, yeah, especially with our, with our schools, that they have an opportunity for the schools to come out and to see this, that they remain in character to be able to ask questions and see what it was like back then. I just think it's, it's very unique. It's very cool for something like this to happen in our community. So I would encourage anybody and everybody, if they have the opportunity, to go out and watch, ask questions, see what's going on. I work nights, so I go by like 11 o'clock at night or 12 o'clock at night, and it's very unusual to see the park crowded that time of night, and to see open fires going on that time of night. And so I stop to see what it's about and kind of enjoy what's going on. So with that, as a Board of, President of the Committee, I would make a recommendation of, from Food and Beverage, of $1,500 to go to this organization for this year's event. And that would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, to approve a $1,500 appropriation to support the Boone County Historical Society in support of Lincoln's Lebanon Civil War Reenactment. All those who are in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Best of luck with your event. It's always a-
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. If it was an Indian event, I'd do a war dance, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation earlier as well.
Make sure those guys don't hit the mayor's house when they fire that thing.
Shakes the windows, but it's all right. It's okay. It's one, one week in a year, it's okay. So the next item I have up here is Ordnance 2018-13, which is a common council, or consideration of the Common Council of Annexation of Elmwood Subdivision to the City of Lebanon. So at this point, I did want to mention, there was some discussion that's still ongoing with the homeowners there, so we don't, we didn't, and this wasn't noticed where we need to, so we need to have some more discussions ongoing. I did want to kind of have the opportunity, since it was on the agenda placed, if you guys wanted to talk through this, or we can wait till there's an ordinance, an actual ordinance set for action tonight. So Ben, do you just want to say anything real quick on this?
Sure. Well, just a little clarification. We did provide notice to the, for the August 13th meeting of the council for the public hearing portion of the ordinance, annexation ordinance. Because there wasn't anything stated at the meeting about being continued, we felt it was better to just go ahead and renotice for the public hearing. So we'll, we'll do the first reading of the annexation ordinance in the public hearing on the October 9th meeting of the council, and then the follow-up second reading and potential adoption of the following meeting of the council. So we were approached several months, actually probably already back in April, by representatives from the neighborhood about potentially being annexed in the city. Historically, I guess this, this neighborhood was platted in 1941. It has from the start been a private street in the neighborhood, and they've been paying for maintenance on both the street and the bridge in that neighborhood since that time. They have concerns long-term about continuing to be responsible, just those 23 homes for maintenance of those, that, that infrastructure, so they approached us about being annexed to the city. They would have all 23 property owners have signed a petition for annexation, and so that's, that's the proceedings for, through the council. We are working through, and I know maybe Kevin can touch on this, but I'll just, we are, they have provided from an engineer an evaluation of that bridge to understand what the current conditions are and some of the immediate repair needs that might be necessary. We are hiring an additional engineer to basically confirm those findings and make sure there's not anything more that we need to be aware of in terms of that bridge. However, that bridge, if there was right-of-way dedicated, would become a county bridge. It does have a span long enough to become a county bridge. We just want to make sure we understand exactly what's going on with that bridge at the current time. We have also talked to them about dedicating sufficient right-of-way, so at some point in the future, nothing planned, obviously, that that road could be widened. Right now, the road back there in the neighborhood is probably only about 16 feet wide, so it's not sufficient for residential street. So if at some point in the future, either near future or long-term future, the city needed to come in and improve that road and widen it, we would have sufficient right-of-way to do that, as well as install a sidewalk on at least one side of the street in there. We want enough right-of-way to be able to do that, to provide some pedestrian access, safer access right now. So right now, if they walk down the street, there's not even enough room for two cars to pass, much less have a pedestrian walking down the street, so it's not, not the ideal situation. So we at least want the flexibility with the right-of-way bill to do that in the future. Otherwise, it's a reasonably straightforward annexation process. It's 100% voluntary. I did run some quick calculations. It looks like, based on the assessed value, the current assessed value in the neighborhood, it's probably an additional $25,000 a year in tax revenue to the city, based on the current municipal tax rate. So obviously, if the AV changes or the tax rate changes, that might change, but based on the current numbers, it's approximately about $25,000 a year in additional tax revenue to the city upon annexation. So happy to answer any questions, but we'll, we'll do the official public hearing at first reading in, in October.
I have a question about at the end there, the circle. How's that going to be handled?
As far as I know, the ra, the diameter of that cul-de-sac is sufficient for turnarounds. We'll have to look at that more specifically and make sure, but it is a fairly big cul-de-sac, but it would remain a cul-de-sac, as long as it meets the requirements for the radius for our fire trucks and all that good stuff.
Ben, what are the advantages and disadvantages of, of annexation?
I don't know that-
And the possibilities?
Yeah. I mean, you know, the biggest thing from the city's perspective is that becomes our road to maintain. So whether that's an advantage or disadvantage, I don't know, but we're receiving revenue from the, from those residents to offset those additional operational costs that we'll see. We will have, probably by the time of that first reading, if not soon thereafter, the fiscal plan that will identify what those specific costs and revenue streams are, so you have a better handle over the next 10 years what those look like. Right now, there's, there's no specific costs other than potential repairs to that bridge that are somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 that have been identified. Again, we're confirming to make sure, other than that, there aren't any specific additional costs in terms of annexing that to the city. So really, the big thing is long-term is the maintenance of a road.
Do they currently have Lebanon utilities?
Yes.
Okay.
So from their perspective, for the additional tax they would pay, not only is the infrastructure going to be maintained, but they're also receiving planning service, et cetera, for that community that they don't receive now, or they'll receive additional code enforcement services, et cetera.
Because currently, their tax funds go to the county?
Yes. And their tax, that same tax will go to the county. It's just their, their tax will go up by the municipal tax rate. So they'll still pay the exact same amount to the county they pay now. That doesn't change when you're annexed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's kind of a unique situation where we have a, it's, it's different than the Yulin situation, where Yulin is actually an incorporated town, whereas Elmwood is an unincorporated part of the county. So it's-
It's a subdivision in the county.
Yeah. So it's, it's a little different situation than the Yulin, but it's, it's essentially, we've just kind of grown around them, and they were never, were brought in or never, never happened, so.
So-
I'm sorry.
So all the homes are on sanitary sewer also with Lebanon?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And just to highlight again, this is a, at this point, 100% voluntary agreement among all the property owners, they want to be part of this.
That's correct.
Yeah. That was the contention we put upon, it said, if, if you guys want us to do that, you all have to sign to say, bring us all in, so.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure, but I think there's one property owner that has not signed.
I've got, I double, I mean, I can double-check again, but I've got-
I think there's one that has not signed.
I've, I've got 23 property owner signatures, so I can double-check to make certain, but I believe I have-
Double-check, because I looked and I didn't find one that, that I found on their GIA site that was not signed.
I, well, we'll definitely double-check that, too, but-
I got several questions, several comments, but I'm gonna hold till the next meeting-
Sure.
-when, I'm assuming residents will be here.
We will have a, yeah, we'll have a representative from the neighborhood.
I'd like to make sure we got the fiscal plan for the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, just got a lot of comments about it.
Sure.
I had a couple of quick questions. You said there was 23 homeowners?
Yes. There's 33 lots, some of them in compliance, but there's 23-
That was my question. 33 lots?
There's 23 homeowners on 33 lots, yeah.
Okay. And the entrance and exit to Elmwood is through Yulin, is that correct?
Correct.
So there's no back way to get into that, to change it or anything like that?
There is not.
Okay.
What's that little, that little pathway back there? Does that belong to the last house?
Yeah. It's on private property.
Okay.
And to clarify, too, that, that access there is not required from-
It is not, no.
So accessing through Yulin is allowed, right?
That's acceptable.
So if, like a fire, they have to go through all those roundabouts to get to Elmwood? Okay. But what did you say the right-of-way was for that road going through there?
Right now, there is no right-of-way, because it's a private drive, so all those residents own to the center line of the road. There is a utility easement for the utilities that I believe is 36 feet wide, if I'm not mistaken, if my memory serves me correctly, but they do right now currently own to the center line of the road. What we've suggested is we'd like a right-of-way of 35 feet, which would allow us to do a 25-foot-wide road, plus a grass strip, plus a five-foot-wide sidewalk within that right-of-way at some point in the future. Could be a long time before we're talking about that. We just want to make sure that the right-of-way is set up now, so we have the flexibility to do that in the future.
Thank you.
I'm assuming that'll be dedicated right-of-way?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay. So I'm assuming it'll be up to the resident, then, to, to survey that, that amount of property, to, to get it taken off their tax roll, or will we have to do that?
We'll have to get a legal description put together for that.
We'll have to, we'll have to do the legal descriptions?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll have to get a legal description-
So that's a cost to the property owner?
I, we haven't talked about that yet.
Okay. I've been, I've been involved in several of these. Yet, it's really not, not an easy thing to go through. I'll just let you know, there's just a lot of things that need to be done beforehand. And, you know, I really don't want to discuss a whole lot of that until residents are here, so they understand.
I guess one question would be, if they got 23 homeowners, when they come make their presentation, will they have legal advice or legal representation, or will, we have 23 people we're listening to at our next meeting?
I don't believe that they're, I think they're going to send a representative.
And that representative will speak for all 23 homeowners?
I believe so. That's my understanding.
Okay.
At this point, every one of the property owners has signed a petition for annexation, so they've accepted being annexed to the city already.
Okay. Well, it's not even they've accepted, they've asked the city to annex.
They've asked us to annex them.
Yeah.
I would highly consider us to think about talking to residents of Yulin about coming into the community as well.
Well, that's, that's more challenging.
It's a bigger task.
Because they would-
I know.
They would, um-
I mean, we've only got, the, our biggest thing is, we've only, and I know we got, we go there now, I suppose. I'm, do we, I don't know, do we plow streets in there?
No.
All right. So we don't go there. Okay. And so now, we're going to go there, and now we're going to go through the town of Yulin to go there, you know, and now we take the chance to tear up their streets, get one little addition that is ours, without, you know.
We probably also use county roads right now to get some sections of the city, too, so.
You know, and it's, it's a real, it's, there's a lot of problems with doing this. There is.
Do you think it's better to-
I think they should be. I really think the whole thing ought to be brought into Lebanon, to be honest with you.
to be honest with you, I really do, just to make it easier, because we surround them all, it'd just make it easier. But here we're going to, here we're going to go out to there to get something that's, we have to go through somebody else to get there.
The challenge is, Yulin is, went through the legal procedures to actually form and organize, incorporate as a town, right? So it's not as simple as them signing an annexation petition, they would actually have to disorganize-
I understand.
And then would move forward.
I understand. But they can be annexed, too, I understand that, too.
Not, not as they currently are-
Yeah, they can. Just takes a little effort, but you can do it.
And then we could probably do a reorganization with them, I don't know if we could, I don't think we can annex another town.
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Anyway, like I said, I wanted to just bring this up for discussion, kind of prime the pump, so to speak, for future meetings, but-
I would, I would offer, if there's any other questions or comments even before the next council meeting, I'd be happy to field those and get questions answered if we need to, so I'm always available.
Thank you.
Hey, just, just for the record, the council doesn't, not every council person up here is wanting to annex Yulin. Just want to let you know. You don't want to start any rumors, I mean, not everybody is wanting to even think about that, so we're not going to do it. Dick just brought it up.
I've said that before.
Yeah, he just brought it up as an idea, so.
I've said that before.
I would say-
I'm not bashful to say it.
I don't want Mayor Steve Lewis calling me and saying, hey, what's going on?
I'm not bashful to say it again. I think we ought to annex Yulin.